Ordinance 22-21-2106, an ordinance adopting a single-member city council district plan, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. I think our first speaker is a caller. Are we good to go there with Mr. Flores?
Fernando?
Yes.
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Mayor Parker and city council members, my name is Fernando Flores and I reside at 2740 Camp Hill, great neighborhood of South Windmill Heights, in City Council District Nine personally. I am here as a representative of the United Hispanic Council of Tarrant County. Yesterday, I had the privilege of watching the video of your last map drawing session on March 23rd. I urge people to watch that video too, because it's an example of how hard has the council been working. I want to thank you for that. From the very beginning, you as a group have advocated for the creation of a second Hispanic Opportunity District in the city in the south side, anchored in the south side, and we appreciate that, let me tell you, because it's been a long, long road. Very simply, people like myself and others have been working on creating a second Hispanic district since the 1990 census cycle, and a dream of ours will be fulfilled today, I hope, when you approve the resolution. It's been a great honor, and it feels good to be close to succeeding, and I want to let you know that we're in support of MAP ANA and whatever minor adjustments you make. And again, thank you for a great job, and also to Mr. Costa and City Stark for their great job they also did during this whole process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Our next speaker is Rick Herring.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Cook. Rick Herring, 1801 Bolton. I'm the moderator for the Riverside Alliance, a coalition of seven neighborhood associations in the Riverside community, and the first and oldest neighborhood alliance in Fort Worth, and will be celebrating a belated 25th anniversary coming up next month, and you'll be hearing more about that. Before we get into the subject at hand, I just want to say I attended one of the bond meetings that was last week at the Riverside Community Center, and shout out to the staff, the presenters and the staff that was there. It was an excellent presentation. But now to redistricting. Aren't you glad it's almost over? You're minutes away, and you'll probably never have to go through that again as an elected representative. But anyway, we're almost there. I just want to say that in regards to Riverside, the map that you're proposing to adopt today is really the realization of a decades-long goal of the Riverside community to be unified within one city council district, and I'll even use the word "realization of a dream." We've wanted this and worked for this for a long time, so we appreciate the direction you're going in. You've seen me and heard from me way more than you wanted to. I've just been the voice, but there are scores and scores and scores of other Riverside citizens that wanted this same thing. And fortunately for us, when the map started being drawn, it looked like we were going to be together and be able to achieve that goal. Otherwise, you would have seen a whole lot more folks from Riverside. But just believe me, there's many, many, many people behind this effort, and it's not just me. And Councilman Nettles is gone, but I will say he had a meeting in one of the neighborhoods in Riverside that he represents. I wasn't able to attend. I was invited, but I think the question was asked by him of the people that were there, if they were supportive of this effort, and I was told that overwhelmingly, they wanted to be unified with the rest of the Riverside community. So, thank you to the council. I've got to say thank you to the fabulous staff, Fernando Costa, Michelle Swindle, Michelle Goot, Leanne Guzman, and many other people that I haven't interacted with, but they've just made it a great process, and we appreciate you so much. And I feel like the process was open. Any citizen or resident that wanted to had every opportunity to address you, to address the task force, and everything else. So, I can't imagine there's been any criticism for the process. Let me just say really quickly, thank you, Councilman Moon. I said this last week, I didn't know if I'd have another opportunity, but from day one, you were on board with what we wanted to do, and we never had to convince you. And I just want to say to Elizabeth Beck, Councilwoman Beck, excuse me, District Nine, you had to give up a lot, and probably more than any other council member, and we appreciate your support, and I appreciate you. You're going to rub off on me and make me get emotional, but I appreciate you coming to me when it looked like things may not be going our way.
Thank you, Rick.
And talking about that, but thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Jimenez.
Mayor Parker, councilpeople, I'm Alex Jimenez. I reside at 245 Willeridge Road in East Fort Worth, White Lake Hills, where we like to say that it's where the city's at your front door and the woods are outside your back door. It's a beautiful place, and I would recommend that a lot of you come visit and stay for a while. I handed out a quote from Teddy Roosevelt, the man in the arena, and I hope you all each have one. And I was reading about that. He was actually giving a speech in France. It was based on citizenship. And Fernando, if you're still listening, yeah, it's the 1990 census, the 2000 census, to 2010 census, and now, and we're finally getting that second district that a lot of folks like Gilbert Garcia, Sam Garcia, Fernando, and others have really worked so hard to get to this today. And I mean, I shed a tear last Tuesday when you guys came together, and I reached out to some of you, and thank you for your service. I heard last night that there was crying last Tuesday, there was almost some fighting going on, and I said, well, it sounds like lunch after Sunday Mass at the Jimenez family when I was growing up. I had eight sisters and five brothers, and we fought, and we argued. But you know what? After we got done with that, we put our arms around each other and said, we got to go to work, because we're all we got. And you, from Teddy Roosevelt's citizenship, you are the people we look to to do what we did last Tuesday. And I thank you, just like Fernando did. And I grew up in West Texas, and I know a lot of people kidding me about my voice, but it's all I got. And end of the day, they used to say, it said, some of my friends are for it, and some of my friends are against it, and I'm with my friends. And I even have friends that are named Fernando, and some are for it, some are against it. But I hope we can all go to lunch after this and put arms around each other, and let's work to make this city even better than it is. And as I sit down, I want to just remind you one thing. Please remind, is it called the Fort Worth Sports Authority? That it's not the far north Fort Worth Sports Authority, but it's all of Fort Worth. Nettles, Mayor Protem, I'm an East sider, won't ever leave, and will always speak up and not apologize for saying, bring jobs, bring more density, bring better education to all parts of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Our next speaker is Lucretia Powell, followed by Bob Willoughby.
Morning. I'm Lucretia Powell. I live in Mayor Protem's district, but I stand today on behalf of myself yet, but still part of the redistricting task force team. Councilman Nettles, Chris Nettles, chose me to be his representative. And the reason why I say on behalf of myself yet the team, the redistricting task force looked at several maps, and we gave our thoughts and opinions and had meetings and discussion, just like the gentleman before me spoke. He said he heard about the fighting, the bickering, and some tears. There were some within the redistricting team, but however, I believe that I encountered those situations different personally, because I encountered jabs from within the team as well as outside the team from certain community of interest. But nevertheless, my point in that is that when I was the only one who opposed MAP X and when I was the only one perhaps who did not respond back to Mr. Bill Schur's personal email for as the redistricting team supporting MAP V4, I stood alone. But even in standing alone, it was well worth the effort to see on last week, the process, the eight or nine hours that the diocese you all stood and rigorously worked through. I am glad to say today, thank you publicly, Mr. Nettles, for choosing such an awesome representative to represent you on the task force team. I do hate that, Mayor Protem, you will no longer be my representative, but I don't know who's going to be over that new district, but I do look forward to welcome whoever it is, male or female. As a whole, every district had to give up, but we all had to give up in order for the betterment of the city of Fort Worth, and it's my prayer that we continue to move forward and be strengthened one to another and for each other.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. We appreciate you. Next speaker is Bob Willoughby, followed by Jennifer Crossland.
Once again, the speaker comment doesn't do much good when you're limited to what you can say. Let me start off with, I did a video for the night, and I brought it yesterday morning down here, and asked if they could tell me by noon whether or not they needed it edited or what. They called me at 3:00 and said, Mr. Will, it's got to be edited a lot, and I did. I left in what the lawyer said I could leave in, and I took out what. The only thing is, is that I was able to get it down here with 15 minutes of spare before closing, and that surprised them, I guess, because they called me before I got home and said, Mr. Will, you can't play that video either. So now, I'm a bit confused. I left in what the lawyer said I could, but they're telling me I can't. So I'm going to try to talk about it unless the mayor stops me, okay? The lawyer said I could. So, Mayor, if this is okay, because I'm confused, y'all tell me one thing, you tell me another. This redistrictizing is being done by race. It should be done by numbers of people, not race. When Hispanics come here and say that I cannot be a good representative in their district because I'm white, it has to be a Hispanic. I take offense to that. I don't like that. And I don't like councilmembers and mayors that don't speak about that either, when a councilmember calls me a racist with no backing. They did, here publicly, and no backing, has never apologized or said anything about it. These people up there, I have not patronized none of those maps, because they never answered a question from the beginning about Proposition 2. When they don't answer a question, that's time to stop. That's time to fix it. Not with them. It rolled right along, because they knew from the beginning they were going to do what they want to do, and that's what's wrong with this. I'm telling you, this whole thing is a scam. It's ridiculous. I mean, it's really, it's not done for the people. It's just done by a pack of lies, really. I mean, to add two more councilmembers to this city, there's 900,000 people here that don't have a clue of what's going on. And when these people come over and say, everybody knows, that's not true. It's not true at all. And not everybody got to speak. No, that's not true either. That's not true. During the 101 history, look at it, I called in to ask questions, they would not talk about Proposition 2. They will not talk about it. Mr. Moon said Proposition 2 was voted on. That's why we wouldn't put it back on the ballot, but he put Proposition 3 back on the ballot, and it was voted on. What's the difference, Mr. Moon, between 2 and 3? One's a $70,000 raise, and others $50,000 raise, and the other one saves the public $200,000, and what I want to put on could save the public $200,000. You're going to cost us $700,000. For what? Two more councilmembers that don't answer questions, that lie? This is no good. And if there's any way the feds can come in and take over, you people are not capable of doing this job. You're not mature enough. You're fighting, one's crying, you're immature, you're overriding people. Bye. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Crossland, followed by Holly Plemmons.
Hi, good morning. I'm Jennifer Crossland. My zip code is 76116. I'm here to talk against this map. I live in Ridgely Hills, and Como is my neighbor. I don't like the idea of that being an island, and let me tell you a little history with me and why this is important. I moved to Fort Worth almost 10 years ago. I moved to Arlington Heights with my brother to open Pacific Table Restaurant, and we lived on the other side of Como that I live on now. I used to run around Lake Como, because it's a nice lake, but eventually I had to stop because the wild dogs got too aggressive, and it just scared me too much, so I had to stop running around the lake, which was a bummer. But here we are, years later, now I live on the other side of Como and in Ridgely, and a lot of the small businesses that I frequent are in Como. Every day, I'm there. I vote there, my kids play on the playgrounds in Como. I don't understand why you'd want to take that out. It doesn't make sense to me. And in fact, my gym that I go to almost every day, we have drive-by shootings behind the gym, so I've been working with Dr. Bird and now Michael Crane on getting the streetlights behind there. I'm told there's a plan, I'm told they're working on it. It's been a year and a half, we're still waiting, there's still drive-by shootings. The space next door is for, you know, it's like a place where you put your stuff, what's that called? Thank you, a storage facility. They've been broken in three times, and they just opened less than a year ago. So, a lot of people have invested interest in Como. I know Como wants to be by itself, but I'm here to tell you right now, I love Como, I love going to Como every day, I support the small businesses. I'm here to speak on behalf of those small businesses, many of which are owned by minorities or women, and I also want to say that I think it is not okay to make districts based on race. That is patently, patently wrong to me. I don't like it. We don't see color, we see color, but we don't see color in my family, and that's the way my kids will stay, that's the way my family will stay, and generations of my family, we've always said, you look at the character of the person, not the skin color. And I'd like you to reconsider that in these maps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Holly Plemmons, followed by Fernando Peralta.
Holly Plemmons, I'm the mom of three in Fort Worth ISD, a lifelong resident of Tarrant and 20-year resident of District 6 in three different houses. I have loved living in my neighborhood. I love Fort Worth, it's my home, my community, but it now feels like a foreign land to me. It's no secret that I'm not a fan of Fort Worth ISD, but that's not why I'm here today. I'm here today to talk to you about your job, the maps, and being respectful of those whose money you spend. I've been told by several of you that you're tired of the debates over the maps, nobody's going to be happy, you know you're going to get sued, and you've got other work to do, you're ready to move on. Please, tell me what work is more important than making sure that all of your constituents that have put you in those seats have fair representation. Constituents that are forced to fund this clown town, but you don't want to waste any more time on. Wow, that's a shot straight through my soul. I'm forced to fund what will hurt my family, while people who don't care about me or my life get to pull the strings. In less than one year under Williams, I have watched my community change, and not for the better. Now you want to change our representative again and lump my community into a whole new district with a community of a way different vibe than mine. Wedgewood can't always be the city's punching bag. Give us a break. The ANA map is going to bring a lawsuit, and this council is prepared to just pass the map. Force taxpayers to fund both sides of this lawsuit. Stop wasting our money. Have stronger backbones than the bullies that sit amongst you. Please, represent all residents, work harder, I'm your job, you work for me. And right now, as your employer, I am not a happy camper. Do you ever think about us or just what's best for you? Our taxes are outrageous, and now you ask for more money in your salaries. Here's a clue, we're not happy with what you're doing to our city, we're not going to grant you a triple raise that comes with a clause for forever raises at your discretion, not the taxpaying voters. How disrespectful can you be? It's hard to live on $25,000 to $29,000 a year? Please, don't sign up for a job that pays that thin. Unbelievable to ask for a raise at all, but especially after eight months on the job of public servants. We are struggling too, but not because we picked the wrong job. We are struggling because of politicians and taxes. Enough of this, we can't take anymore. You go learn to live on less. Maybe y'all should pull your kids from private and give Fort Worth ISD a try. Maybe you'll become aware that all the stories you hear are true. The facts are out there, you just have to sit and look for them versus be told what to believe. Why can't we just use Mr. Moon's map? It was the most fair for all colors of Fort Worth residents that are forced to fund this city. Please don't approve this ANA map. Go back and spend more time on this. We deserve it, even if it inconveniences you. This is our lives, our homes, where we live, and with one bang of a gavel, you destroy that work for all taxpayers. Eight good choices.
And after Mr. Peralta, it's a phone call to John Crawford, but I think they were having trouble reaching him.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Obviously, I didn't get the memo about being sued and tied today, came in my uniform. I'm the third Fernando, because you've heard Fernando's talk. Obviously, I was born in the 90s, I wasn't working on redistricting, but I've been very passionate and vocal about this redistricting process since the beginning. Obviously, being president of Latinas and Rosemont Neighborhood Association on the south side, and a strong advocate for our Hispanic community, I do want to make one point of clarification that was said, that our community never said anybody that wasn't Hispanic couldn't represent our community, but we wanted an opportunity to have more representation on this council. I would also suggest that people speaking tonight read a book that I read to my son, and it's called Anti-Racist Baby, and it's been on the news. Get educated. Secondly, I do want to make it very clear that I am supportive of this map, even though it breaks up Rosemont. This map has given us the second Latino Opportunity District that we asked for, obviously not as strong, because there has been other maps out there that showed us that there could be strong numbers, but hey, after this grueling battle, we'll take it. But I do want to make it very clear that Rosemont and neighborhoods like Polly are still split. But through this process, even with a lot of mixed emotions, you know, some misinformation, we've gotten to this point. And so I do want to say thank you to council, every single one of y'all, even though some of us might not be friends, I still appreciate every single one of y'all, and I look forward to continuing the accountability and the awareness, so we do stand together more as a city and do better for all our communities. So with that being said, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Our next speaker, did we have Mr. Crawford on the phone? No? Okay. Is Carlos Chercius?
Hello?
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Carlos Chercius. Morning, Mayor, City Council, and City Council Manager David Cook. The reason I'm calling today and doing public comments is because I encourage the council to vote down the redistricting map that y'all have in front. There are several communities that are still not satisfied with the boundaries whatsoever, and I also want to vouch for Wedgewood, that's the area where I live in. I don't agree in moving to District Nine. Wedgewood has historically always been in District Six, and I think it deserves for Wedgewood to be integrated into District Nine. I did the math, and I saw the precincts, of course, that are being incorporated into District Nine, and it just looks like the incumbent for District Six is wanting to push all of Wedgewood, since that's literally the area where the opponent had the highest margins of victory. So I am very concerned that there's a political move to push it down into District Nine. I don't want to be in District Nine, and if I am forced to be in District Nine, and so are my other neighbors and my family, we will mobilize and of course elect someone new, but there are many problems with this map. This map does not look well. I encourage the council, of course, to follow, hopefully in the future, because it's a learning experience, but to follow Fort Worth ISD's model. They handled their redistricting process in one day, and the only issue was, of course, the precinct change, and it was handled in one day, the voter in, it was all done, and they respected the redistricting map from the committee. So, I understand that it's a messy time, and you know, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to be perfect, but I highly encourage y'all to listen to the community, listen to Wedgewood. Please vote down this map, and please respect the wishes of the constituents. You know, y'all listen to Polly, y'all listen to other communities. I think today, y'all should listen to Wedgewood as well, including me as well, and hopefully y'all can get a better map. I mean, y'all have already said president, y'all have moved maps in the past, worked together, and to the service that there are three councilmembers are creating a political mess in Fort Worth, and it's just disappointing to see those three, and that's generated and missed back unfortunately. So, thanks for your time, vote down this map, and I hope the council can get a better map that's much more clean and not heavily gerrymandered. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. And Council, I believe that's the last of our speakers, because we could not reach Mr. Crawford. And with that, I'll turn to councilmembers for speaking. Councilmember Williams, I may go to you first, since you're with us remote, and I don't want to forget you, if you have anything to say at this point before we move for approval.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things to say. First of all, thanks to all of you as, you know, my teammates on council for this long journey. It's been, what, eight months now, and I'm really proud of the process that we put forward. And you know, I'm really proud specifically about how inclusive this process has been for the residents and how participatory it has been for our residents as well, and every step of the way, each of you were engaged in that process. And Wednesday last week was really hard, but I'm really grateful for that experience with you all and where we landed with the ANA map, and I love the name. Just to talk specifically about the map, you know, the beauty of the ANA map is that it was a compromise. Many of us, you know, went through neighborhoods, input to try to figure out the pieces of the puzzle, and this map certainly did that, and from a District Six perspective, you know, it's really, I think it's important to note for the record that, you know, Como being placed in District Six was really important for a number of factors. One, socioeconomically, I think it's important, when we look at the median income of the neighborhood on top of the median income surrounding Como, that it was important that they were with like neighborhoods of socioeconomic status. And also, I think some that we've been really response to is the requests of neighborhoods all across the city, and Como was really clear about requesting to be in District Six in this process, so I think that's important to put on the record. I'll also say that, you know, last Wednesday, we had a lot of conversation about neighborhoods that are stored to District Six like Wedgewood, and also our Grove Neighborhood Association. And I think it's important that in this redistricting process, we also recognize that there were many neighborhoods that were stored to districts that changed. that there were many neighborhoods that were restored to districts that changed in this process and this map in order to achieve our goals of honoring the growth of the city and ensuring that our council represents the beautiful and rich diversity of our city. So I'm just grateful for this process. It was a tough one, but I'm grateful for where we landed, and I'll be supporting the map today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Turn to Councilmember Moon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to speak to the process overall, and it's not just a redistricting process. It's an election cycle that Fort Worth has had over the years, and you've heard some complaining today, I guess, about time restraints and things of that nature. But the redistricting didn't start in 2022. It started in 2016, when we, as a council, went to the voters and said, "Do you want to add two more council districts?" And there were other propositions during that charter election. And we, as a city, host charter elections every four to five years in even number of years. Every two years, in odd number of years, we host elections for city council members and mayors. And then every four years, 2018, 2022, we do bond elections. And we try to keep those, we and they, it's prior councils that have put this election cycle in process, we try to keep those topics separate with every election cycle. In 2016, there were several items on the ballot, one of which increases the number of council districts from eight council districts to 10. We've seen our population increase. I was opposed to that increase in council districts. I voted against it. It passed by 100 votes. But that was the voice of the people. And so when others complained about us not having time to change, our next step, the election was over, the people had voted, the next step was, what does the 2020 census data show? And then from there, we get that data, and we draw the maps for 10 council districts. And we chose to do this on the dais, at the work sessions, in a public forum. And no one saw that redistricting maps process at the state legislature when those maps were drawn, at the state senate when those maps were drawn, or the federal congressional maps when those maps were drawn. So I'm proud of the transparent process that we, as a city, went through following the process that was set before this current elected body. I will also speak to the timing, is that, to be fair to council members, it was important that we had this done by June, essentially, really, to allow for legal challenges, which I do expect, and I don't expect the map to hold up, but I do expect legal challenges. We always have, regardless of whatever map we put forth. And then also being fair to elected officials, to give them a chance to reside in a council district by the July deadline. That is part of our city charter. So I hope that helps with the transparency and the timing consideration that others have spoke to today. And I'll let my other council members speak, but that's my sentiment. I will be supporting this map. It seems early on, we, the adage was, "It takes five people to get things done at City Hall." And I'm proud to say, I think we'll get nine people together to get something done at City Hall today.
Thank you, Carrie. Our next speaker is Councilmember Flores, followed by Mayor Protem Bivens.
Thank you, Mayor Parker. The comments so far have illustrated one point that I want to drive home. This is a map of compromise. The operative word being compromise. Not everyone will be pleased with it. We've heard from some that aren't, but fairly so. We also heard from many who are in support of it. It's part of the democratic process. It has achieved improved equitable and proportionate representation consistent with the 2020 census data. It's established a second Hispanic Opportunity District in compliance with the Voting Rights Act. For those that aren't familiar with it, it's not a difficult read. I suggest you do read it. Council based our decisions on many factors, again, consistent with what I've already mentioned, but more importantly, and I've heard a few people say it, and factually they're incorrect, there have been race-neutral considerations built into this process. We have looked at those when it comes to communities of interest. There are social, economic considerations, political preferences, and community cohesiveness. All these we endeavored to abide by, and these are supported in relevant case law. I want to thank the Redistricting Committee, its chair, former Councilman Sal Espino, each of my fellow council members and mayor, for all the time, energy, and work spent in this public process. Keep in mind that in times of challenge and difficulty, relationships are tried but also strengthened. And a special thanks to you, the public, who have come to these meetings consistently, gave us your input, your perspectives. These were taken into account in the process that eventually arrived at this map of compromise.
Thank you, Carlos. Our next speaker is Mayor Protem Bivens.
I want to thank everyone who participated, who chose to participate in this process, which has seen tears, which has seen yelling, which has seen this council like I've never seen it before. I will tell you, the information that the 2020 census gave us dictated that we add two more districts. My district right now is bigger than the city of Tyler. It's one person. And so I welcome the idea of shrinking the population down. I think this new map will take us down to about 95,000 or so. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think you need to know that there were sacrifices made that you probably don't think much about, but I just want you to know that I am so very proud of Carlos Flores for making the point of making sure we recognize the Hispanic presence in this city. Back in 1977, when I was a reporter, I think we had Zapata, who was the one Hispanic representative. It's time for another. And so if that's a problem, I don't know what to tell you. But representation is important. I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Beck, whose sacrifice is more than people realize. What she did in terms of yielding to the will of the body was shaved off part of her district to help create that second Minority Opportunity District for Hispanics. I think she is to be recognized and commended for that. That's why there were tears, because that neighborhood had a sense of cohesiveness, and I think that'll maintain. If you live around the corner from a friend, I think even after redistricting takes place, you're going to still have a friend around the corner. I will also tell you that when it comes to the participation, you heard the term "redistrictizing" by Mr. Bob Willoughby, and he talked about redistrictizing not being open to the public. It was very open, but here's the catch: People have to read. A former council member, Kelly Ellen Gray, would tell me, "Reading is fundamental." I would suggest to each of you right now, if you don't subscribe to city news, you should do so. Go to fortworthtexas.gov. I preach that everywhere I go. Don't know how to get your trash picked up? Go to fortworthtexas.gov. Subscribe to my Fort Worth app. You see street lights out, let us know. Nobody is driving around daily looking out for those basic needs. We need engagement. And so I am glad this process is over. I did not engage in the process of map drawing. I don't like that. I would have been pleased if we had just taken what the task force gave us and tweaked that, but I didn't oppose council members who did participate in map drawing. But I think it's because of that participation is why you saw that yelling and stuff last week, or whenever we were here, by days run together. But it's been a process, and at the end of the day, we're all going to be people who live in Fort Worth, no matter whose council district you're in. And I think we're going to be okay. Those are my remarks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now to Councilmember Nittles.
Thank you, Mayor. Throughout this process, towards the end, I would look at Fernando Acosta, and I say, "I believe we have a map." He'd say, "Thank you." So I'm gonna say it today. I believe we have a map. Don't do it. What we have learned is that you don't have the votes until the votes are taken. And I want to start out, and I want to be, take my time, because this is going to affect the city of Fort Worth for the next 10 years, 12 years. And so I want to make sure that I hit some points. And from day one, I understood the task of redistricting was to establish a second Latino-Hispanic Opportunity District. We can't determine the outcome of any election. If we could determine the outcome of the election, you wouldn't see what you see today. But people worked hard to get to these seats, and that's why we have to wait till the election process. So the only thing that we can do is make it an Opportunity District, and that was the task at hand. I supported an IRC, Independent Redistricting Committee, to be put in place. We didn't have the votes, and the prior council before us didn't agree with that. And so the best thing we could do was to reestablish the task force, Dr. Williams, myself, and other council members, and put in that we should do an independent redistricting task force. And so we just reestablished what was already in place. And so we gave them opportunity to, they didn't draw maps, they looked at maps. And the maps that they chose was Map X. It completely, and I say completely, disregarded one of the criterias, and that was to keep communities' interests together. It drew up, it just split it, community of interests completely. One of the things it also did is back when we went to single-member districts, District 8 was put together to be a black district. In that new map, it disregarded, it completely disarrayed District 8. And we, as a council, or the majority of some of us, did not agree with Map X. And so what we did was, we made revisions to Map X. And you can go to the slides and see that Fernando put up the different changes, some made 50 changes, some made 20 changes. But I want to tell the task force that we appreciate your efforts. We appreciate you taking your time. We appreciate you submitting us a map. We honor that. We took your map, and we made changes to it that will make all of council come to a consensus. Mayor Maddy Parker has been from day one saying she wants this council to be as a consensus and not a 5-4, where we all can work to a compromise. And so as we go farther, and we talk about dealing with Poly and dealing with the economics of Poly being historically in District 8, and when we started making changes at the last day of moving pieces into the new district and taking other pieces out, it started diluting the Hispanic vote, the VAP, voting age population. And we refused to dilute that population. When we started on the last day, we were at 60%. We got it back to 58.7 something, right at 59% VAP. It was our effort from day one to draw a second Latino-Hispanic Opportunity District. I want to talk to the fact that some think we're, some of the Hispanic community think we're not fighting for the Latino community. And I want to tell you that those tears that you saw, us going back and forward, us discussing it publicly, was making sure that we did the right thing. We didn't get to wherever we wanted to get to, but we got during the close. We could have chose a map that disarrayed and did not have an opportunity Latino district. There was maps out there. There were several maps out there, but this council did not do that. It's because we understand that we need more representation. The V4 horseshoe map that was voted down during the last meeting, it was voted down, and we started making revisions to Councilman Moon's map that worked on with Councilman Nittles. We started making revision to that map. And I want to tell you that some of you that didn't watch it, and some of you that was not in the room, because it's, when you're in the room, you can actually see what is going on. As we was making changes to that map, the feel just wasn't right, that we were going to leave out a true opportunity on the table. And my counterpart, Councilwoman Beck, said, "Can we reconsider the horseshoe map? Can we reconsider the opportunity to really create a second Latino district?" Knowing that once we considered that map, it was going to completely take a chunk out of her district. I want to give the same sentiments that Mayor Protem said. We appreciate you, Councilwoman Beck, for your willingness to give up pieces of your district that historically you lived in, your family lived in, Worth Heights and other areas that you truly love to represent, but for the sake of the community, for the sake of the people, you was willing to do that. There are senators now that have received new maps, that they possibly won't go back to the senate because of how they drew those maps. They are good representatives, but because one party drew a map to make it better for them, they may not have the opportunity to do that. We didn't do that here at the council. We didn't choose, and I'm proud to say, we didn't choose party lines here at the council. We chose community interests. Thank you, Rick, for what you said. We chose to keep Riverside together. We chose, and even as it related to Wedgwood, in some of the maps, it was going to be split up. But Councilman Jared said, "Wedgwood don't want to be split up," and we agree with that. But it did not fit in District 6. It had to go in District 9. These are some of the changes that had to be made in order to make this process move further along. And I want to talk to, as Carlos talked about, compromise. And I kind of wrote some things down that District 3 didn't get a chance to keep the historical Como in its district, which it was not Councilman Crane willing to give it up. Councilman Crane has wholeheartedly represented Como. When they called, he answered. He might not look like Como represented the people, but he represented them, and he historically had to give that up. District 4 and 7 wanted two new districts far north Fort Worth. They didn't get that. They also wanted the population to be lower, to expect the growth that is going to continue to come. They didn't get that either. District 5 gave up Meta Creek, the Lancaster Quarter, working on the BRT, gave up Willbarger, Village Creek. Compromise. District 9 didn't keep Echo Heights, portions of Near Side, close to I-35, Brentmore, Worth Heights, part of the compromise. District 8 then keep Riverside, Greenway, Meta Brook, Lancaster Quarter, Ruby Carey Library, part of the compromise. There are other districts that stay more intact than others, but it's part of the compromise. But let me say what we did create. We created a true second Latino Opportunity District, that when '23 comes, it is our hope that we will not have just one Hispanic on this council. We will have two, to give the minorities an opportunity to elect a representative of their choice. I will end with this. This is not the best map. It's not the most popular map. It's not an Oscar-winning map. It's not a Republican map. It's not a Democrat map. It's not a staff drawing map. It is truly a compromise map that this entire council will vote for approval today. I want to thank our colleagues. I want to thank my district director, who we together spent tirelessly hours drawing this map, and we took this map and made amendments and revisions to it on the last day. And I want to thank all of you being a part of the process, and I look forward to working with you as we sit on this dais to make other changes as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nittles. Councilmember Beck?
Caught me off guard there, sorry.
Caught me off-guard there, sorry. Rick, I will tell you that when I was embarrassed that I cried, one of my predecessors said to me, that's what we do here in District Nine, so you'll fit right in. So I'm just carrying on a tradition there for you. I want to open with, I see color. I see it, and it is a beautiful bouquet that makes up this vibrant city that I have the honor and the opportunity to get to sit and represent a large chunk of that population. During this process, we heard many of those voices, whether it be here at the microphone, in the onslaught of emails that we received, or text messages, phone calls, talking about a dream that they had, a dream to have their voice heard on this dais. And with this map, we have given, we have opened the door to that opportunity to see that dream actualized for so many people in this city. We heard from Como that they have been historically disenfranchised, and I don't think that that is a dig at Michael Crane. I agree with Councilwoman Nettles that you do an exceptional job at representing all of your constituents, from Ridgely to Como to Las Vegas Trail. You are a very hard worker, and they were incredibly lucky to have you for these, this period of time. But I can also empathize with being from a group of people that have seen their voices snatched from them so often by leaders. I think the people that you see here on this dais are truly committed to representing Fort Worth, regardless of what you look like, where you live, or what your socioeconomic status is. That has not always historically been the case, not just here in the city of Fort Worth, but in this state and in our nation. We have denied that voice for so long. And so I want to thank every person on this council, particularly you, Michael Crane, and Chris Nettles, because huge sacrifices had to be made to allow the opportunity for that dream. And when we vote on this map today, we are opening that door. And I look forward to seeing a son or daughter of Como on this dais. I look forward to seeing a Latina from the South Side join us on this dais, because they are important voices in the room. And I think they will make our city better, to have a rich diversity of not just skin tones of the color that we see on this dais, but experiences, backgrounds. And I think you see it here in this diversity on this council, and I have no doubt in my mind that we were able to create this opportunity to see a dream actualized because of the people you have sitting on this dais right now, because you have people truly committed and wrestling with what is the best job we can do to answer the calls that we have heard from the people of Fort Worth. I want to thank the task force. I think it's really important as a leader, not a politician, but a leader, to admit when you were wrong. And I was one of those folks that thought going this task force route would add additional transparency to it. It would add additional public comment. And I felt like that's what we were hearing from our constituents, and that's what Fort Worth wanted to see. And I think there was fear, because we did see, often in redistricting, to the victor goes the spoils, and you will see one side of the aisle or the other rip up districts and absolutely silence, folks. We saw that happen with our Senate District Ten. We didn't do that here in Fort Worth. We didn't do that at all. We really worked together to make that happen. Thank you for your time, for those of you that drew maps and submitted them to the task force. I know that many of you feel like it was in vain. I will tell you that there was lots of discussion about this process and how we could make it the best process, and we weren't always perfect. Sometimes it was a little clunky, sometimes it was a little confusing to our residents. Most of the time, it was a little confusing to us, too. We were just trying to get it right. And so it's why you saw changes. It's because we really, truly were trying to do what is best. Having gone through this process now, one thing I can tell you is that it is inherently a political process, but not necessarily in the way that you think. Sure, there were some squabbling over, you know, roads or stadiums or, you know, neighborhoods, but it wasn't for the benefit of an individual councilperson. It was for the benefit of the city, and we were advocating on behalf of our neighborhoods. Whether it's something we personally wanted to lose or to keep a neighborhood, we honored their voices to the best of our ability as they came through and really shared with us their desires. When we're elected here, whether you agree with our politics, our ideas, our platform, you're really electing people to, you're electing our judgment, and you're asking us to stand up here or sit up here and make really tough decisions. You're asking us to weigh all the competing interests. And if there's something this nine months has taught me, is that perspective is a lot, and whatever is most important to you, you will center, and things will radiate from that. And I don't think it'll be a surprise that a lot of people have a different center, and what they radiate's a little different. And it becomes our job up here to have that tussle and have that conversation and wade through that and determine what is best and how we best navigate those competing interests and how we prioritize them. This map was a compromise, and by its very definition, a compromise cannot be made without each one of us giving just a little. The result should be a begrudging acceptance. And I think that while we're all proud of what we did on this dais, no one is doing jumping jacks, because we all had to make some really tough decisions. And so, thank you for the task force. I think the people elected us to make those decisions, and ultimately, council made those decisions. And I understand not everyone will agree with that, but I think we came out with a much stronger Latino/Latina Opportunity District because of it. I think that we saw our neighborhoods really honored in a way to the best of our ability that we could. I want to finish on sacrifice, because I appreciate my colleagues and their acknowledgement of the sacrifice that I made. And I want to be clear that the sacrifice is giving up neighborhoods that I love to represent, that have historically been in District Nine. But we haven't talked about the gain and the opportunity with this new district. The South Side is where my family's Fort Worth story started. It's where my mom grew up in Worth Heights. It's where my grandmother owned a business. But my Fort Worth story started in Wedgewood. And Wedgewood was where I grew up. It's where I went to elementary, it's where I went to middle, it's where I went to high school. And I am so excited to get to have that story in District Nine. And I hear that you're a little upset, and maybe I don't have your same political views, but I worked really hard on this council to represent every single person. I don't care if you agree with me or not, I'll still fight for you, and I will still fight for Wedgewood. And I can assure you that there is no one on this dais, no one, that is more loyal and more proud to get to represent all of those W streets that we see in the southwest portion of Fort Worth. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Councilmember Crane, I think I missed you earlier, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, no problem. I get overlooked all the time, Mayor, thanks.
You're a middle child.
I'll try and make this brief, but you know me, I'm not going to. So this has been, I'll just say this, and summarize a lot of the stuff people have already said, this has been a very, very hard process. Relationships have been frayed, tears have been shed, but ultimately, I think what you hear a lot is compromise. And for some reason, in today's day and age, that's a dirty word, but I don't think it is. We all had to compromise, or most of us did in some way, shape, or form, to get to this map. I want to say also, this was a very, I believe, a very open and transparent process. We've joked about it a little bit, but there's a reason at the state level, they go behind the scenes, make a map, and it comes out, and there's the map. We didn't do that. We tried to let citizens, and I think we did not try, we did let citizens have voices. We let them attend, be a part of the map drawing sessions, received countless emails about this over the last, and as Carrie alluded to, this wasn't just over the last couple of months, this has been ongoing for a long period of time. I also will address, Mr. Willoughby seems to leave once we can actually address and talk to him, but I'll say it, because maybe he's still watching. I don't think anybody up here wants two new personalities sitting up to have to deal with, and to deal with the craziness that you have to do with just the number of personalities we already have. I think if we all could have voted and shut that down, we probably would have, just knowing what we worked through. But you know what? The people spoke, the people voted, and we had to honor that. I don't care if it was by 100 votes, I don't care if it was by four votes. It's about the people that showed up and voted, and they wanted two new seats. So we had to honor that. One of the goals that was set out and has been spoken about already was to create another Latino/Latino Opportunity District. And we did that with voting-age population somewhere at 62 and 59%. Again, that's something that people were asking for, and I think it's only fitting with the size that Fort Worth is, as we've talked about, one Hispanic representative, that we have at least the ability for a second Hispanic to sit on this council. Then it's up to, we don't control who sits in these seats, but then it's about voting. So I can say, as I've said day one when we started this, get out and vote, find good candidates, and get out and vote and run them. This was a complicated process. Anybody that's involved, Rick's been around, a lot of you, too, hours and hours and hours of meetings, hours and hours of public comment, we've listened to that and tried to incorporate that as best as possible. I appreciate the passion from the community that played in this process. Many of you are here today, and I know many of you are watching online. To the redistricting task force, I do appreciate, really, really do appreciate your time and your thorough regard for the process. You dedicated your time, your intellect, and done the best you could. However, this is not a mere science. It's already been alluded to, this is about neighborhoods, it's about people, it's about the citizens of Fort Worth, all the citizens of Fort Worth, wanting to ensure that their voices are heard. And I'll say this, no one knows the districts, no one, than these up here. I've knocked on thousands of doors, I've attended hundreds of neighborhood meetings, I filled up thousands of phone calls and emails at all hours of the day and night, attended egg hunts and block parties and trash cleanups in July Four celebrations, Halloween's in the hills, and I could go on and on and on about events, talking to my citizens, talking to District Three, even, not even my District Three, but across the city of other events that I've been invited to go to. You know, I've missed family dinners, experienced abbreviated family moments, had conversations, coffees, attended parties with friends when I wasn't really present, because all of that time, I'm thinking about this job, I'm thinking about the constituents, and I'm trying to be responsive. And I won't even go into the ludicrous, baseless claims that all of us suffer with, being assumptions of our characters and our motives, and we're all victim to it, and there's a whole, I can play out a whole Will and Chris Rock thing if I wanted to, but I won't. Some of you've heard part of it today. This is a sacrifice, and I've heard some comments about, if you don't have time to do it, great, I get it. My wife questions my sanity every single day that I would want to do this. But me, it's not about, you know, this is, for me, it's about the people, and it's not about the politics. It's about making a difference, and it's something Alex Jimenez said, it's about being the man in the arena. And that's what we all sit up here and do every single day. Jenny Crossland, right behind you is William Johnson, call you out. We're going to get those lights down there, and so he can talk to you about that, and I know it's something we've worked on for a long period of time. But I want to make it clear to you and anybody here, I did not want to give up Como. Como is a special part, I'm the crier today, right? It is a special part of District Three, and I've worked very, very hard to represent them, to hear their voices, to help make a difference for those beautiful souls in Lake Como in Texas. Ultimately, those voices are what led me to be okay with Como being drawn into another district, as long as it did not bifurcate or disturb other neighborhoods. And this, and there was a chance that that would have happened, but we worked it out, worked it out behind the scenes where it would not do that. I heard from many, and all of you did too, many leaders, many voices in the leadership, and those connected with the leadership and other citizens of Como. I also heard from other voices in Como that do not agree with the decision, and to them I say, I'm not going anywhere. Whether or not I represent Lake Como, Texas on paper, I will still be a voice for you here at the city, at the city and City Hall, I'll still sing your praises, and still pray for your health, well-being, and that all of the people of Lake Como prosper and realize your dreams. You called me an adopted son of Lake Como, and as an adopted son, I know there is no better voice to represent Como than that of an actual son or daughter from Lake Como. So Councilwoman Beck, what she alluded to, take those words and don't waste this opportunity. I want to thank the staff, Fernando, Michelle Swindell, your map-making genius, Michelle Goot for making up the maps. And with that, I'm going to, Swindle, what'd I say? Swindell? Swindle, Swindle, sorry. Yep, Melissa, what are you doing? And so with this, I'm going to say, I am voting for Map Anna. It is not perfect. I do not love it, period. But it's the compromise this council had to make to get our stated goals. And if anybody wants to sit down with me at any point in time and go through all the sausage-making to get to where we did, I'm happy to do it any time of the day. It was not easy, it was painful. A lot of us gave up a lot of things we didn't want to make it, to get it done, but we did. And so also, I want to stand, Katie, stand up. Yeah, you got to stand up. She hates this. But I know some people may, where the heck did Anna come from? But if anybody watched the map-making sausage, no, 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 you can't sit down. But she is close to having a baby, she will be induced on Monday if it doesn't come before that, right? But I kept saying, can we get this map done before that baby graduates college? And that's where the name Anna came from. So that baby has a lot of weight on its shoulders that it's going to bear. So thank you, and with that, I'm done.
And her name is going to be Anna.
That's right.
Maybe not now, she may have decided, never mind. We would understand if you changed her name, we do understand. I think all of our councilmembers who wanted to speak have done so. Thank you all for expressing all of your interests, both on behalf of your district and behalf of the residents that live in those districts. I have often felt during this process as your chief referee, and there were moments I needed a whistle last Tuesday, if you watched that meeting. But I take the responsibility of being your mayor very seriously. And yeah, it's a sacrifice, but it's also an incredible honor. The redistricting process is a full-contact sport, and because it's every 10 years, I can promise you, I will not be here to witness the next one. But we attempted to listen to all the interests, and most importantly, the voices I listened to were your neighborhoods and your communities that came here over and over again. And because Mr. Jimenez brought the beautiful, only thing Teddy Roosevelt can say, I thought I'd read a few lines, and this is not to the councilmembers on this dais, because we all sometimes get the credit and the discouragement sometimes from residents. But there are still people sitting in this audience who showed up every single meeting. Rick, your name has been mentioned many times over, but truthfully, I think these lines are important as we think about what this country is facing, how difficult it is sometimes to bring each other together, to express our differences of opinion and voices, it is okay to disagree. It is okay to disagree, but it is also okay to do so in a civilized manner and to try to reach a consensus that is best for all people. And that's my job as your mayor, and something I consider to be a great honor, a privilege, but also sometimes a struggle. It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena. And I say that to all of my residents here in the city of Fort Worth. Thank you for being in the arena with all of us. We really do appreciate you. With that, council, I'll take a motion and a vote. And a second, council, please vote. I don't have a button. I don't have a button, but you can hit yes, please. Thank you. Motion carries.